November 10th regularly scheduled meeting of Bristol, Virginia City Council to order. Before we have a moment of silent prayer, I'd like to ask everyone to keep the friends and family of Paul Spangler, our city manager, former city manager who passed away a week or so ago, keep these friends and family in your prayers. So let's please join me in a moment of silent prayer. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Appreciate everyone that came out for the mayor's minute. I would just like to thank the voter registrar, her staff, the elections board, and all of the election officials that worked very long day last week, last Tuesday, but also the weeks before that with the early voting. And I commend them for the work that they did. They did a great job making sure that everyone in the city could vote and vote early, vote safely, or vote on Election Day. And they did a really great job in getting those votes tabulated and done in a reasonable amount of time, not too much later than normal, given the large number of people that voted. So I appreciate everyone that came out to vote, and I appreciate the job that they did as well. Any council comments?
I have one thing that is kind of related to what you talked about, Mr. Mayor. We are now a week out from probably the most historic vote that we've ever taken in the city. And I just want to thank the over, I believe it was over 70% of voters who voted to pass the casino referendum. As I said then, and I'll say now, it's a new day for Bristol. And we have a lot of opportunity, and we have a lot of responsibility as the elected body to do it in a responsible way, and to be good stewards of the money that we get from the taxes from this. So thank you to the voters for passing this and for giving the city of Bristol a new opportunity.
I wholeheartedly agree with that. Anybody else? All right. Item B, city managers' comments?
No comments tonight.
All right. Item C, matters to be presented by members of the public non-agenda items. We have one person that signed up, Ms. Marnie.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I am a property owner. We know one thing for sure. We have a massive, crippling debt of $107 million. We know that for sure. It's a fact. It's in writing. It's in the books. No question, no argument. It's there. It's real. My understanding is that we have a debt payment, and I hope that the chief financial officer will correct me if I make a mistake on my figures. My understanding is that we make a debt payment in December. It's due in January, but we make it this December, and it will be approximately $2 million. Now, my understanding is that money has already been budgeted. But what we must remember is, this is going to go around again next year, and the next, and the next, and the next. It doesn't end. It keeps going on. Now, one of my questions is this. What are you five men, and you just happen to be men, what do you five men plan to do this night for the citizens of this city who are being penalized by having to pay $33 a month for trash pickup? I get mad every month. I'm donating almost $400 a month to the city. I had no choice. It's because of other people's, well, I better be careful here. It's because of power and ego. It's because of stupidity and bad judgment. That's why I'm being penalized, and I don't like it. Now, in addition to that, our property tax is too high. We're a low-income community. We are an older community. And God knows we don't have any money. But you don't make a lot of money on property tax. But what you can do is make it so expensive people can't afford to live here and don't want to live here. Now, what are you going to do about that, fellas? Another thing, Mr. Mayor, if you, I may need another minute or so, and I will ask you, please, if you will let me have it.
I'll give you one minute, Ms. Marnie.
Thank you. Now, at the last meeting, which I was not in attendance, at which I was not in attendance, there was a vote on using some money from whatever the name of it is that is supposed to help out people or organizations or somebody or the other who had trouble because of the virus. Now, what I don't understand is, did you all at that meeting use that money for the highest and the best use? I say no. Now, my understanding is that you gave the Chamber of Commerce another $56,000. Fellas, there was a reason why their budget was cut. The angels didn't come down from heaven and cut that budget. There was a reason why, reasons why. Now, you've put it back. I say that is not the highest and best use of that money. Now, what this city has a desperate need for is to help the citizens. We have people in this city, I know my church just had a food drive. We have people in this city who are hungry. They need food. They need personal items. They're losing their houses. They're losing their cars. They don't give a rip about a casino because they can't figure out how they're going to get supper together on the table tomorrow. That's what they're thinking of. How am I going to feed my children? How am I going to buy little Susie a winter coat? She's outgrown the one she had last year. They're not thinking about a casino. My Lord, we won't see anything from that for two or three years. Remember that. But what people are afraid of is, how are we going to pay for the gas to heat the house? How am I going to buy my children a winter coat? It tears my heart out. How are we going to buy a winter coat for our children? How are we going to put food on the table? What is the highest and the best use of that money? Giving it back to the Chamber of Commerce? No. Now, I had the words, the document, whatever, read to me on the telephone about what that money can be used for. Now, there's one last sentence in there, and that's the only thing I can think of that would even be a modicum of an explanation as to how the city could justify giving that money to the Chamber of Commerce. Only that last sentence, and you'd have to stretch it. Now, if you talk about Discover Bristol, gentlemen, we already have the Bristol racetrack who has, and we are lucky to have them, who has an international reputation. They have contacts all over the world. They have contacts, personal and otherwise, all over the United States. They talk about Bristol all the time. Then Jill McGlothlin and his friend are the same way. They have great contacts. They have to promote Bristol because that's where their money is going to be. Now, my point is this. For this particular time, and that's the kicker, this particular time, let the city, let these people promote Bristol. And we won't have to pay for that this year. This, only this time now, that's the reference. We will not have to use the city's money to do this promoting because it's already being done for us. Now, another time, we'll take another look at it. But gentlemen, the highest and the best use of that money should go to help the citizens. Now, I've spent this afternoon trying to figure out how in the world the city could take that money, $100,000, I think it is, close to it, somewhere along in there. How can we take that money legally? We can't give it to a food pantry because there's one in Bristol, Tennessee, and one in Washington County. That's illegal. We can't do that. We can't say give everybody a voucher to Food City because then we'll have Krogers and Aldi's and everybody else saying, uh-uh. Now, I can't figure out what to do about this unless we, we've got to get our brains together, folks, and come up with something. We've got to help these people. And some friends of mine took a trunk full of canned goods and all to our church the other day to give, to donate to the community pantry. And then there were some other items, personal items, that are not on the list at the food pantry. They cannot give them away, and they cannot buy them. I didn't know that, but you can't. So what they did, I said, why don't you just give them a big check and let them buy what they need? And they said, because that's illegal. They can't do it. So what they did was go out and buy a whole bunch of stuff, personal type items that were needed. And they said, we're going to donate those, and they can give them to whoever they want to have them. Now, that is a deal. But we can't do that. It's illegal. It's in another state. How can we do this? Tell the Chamber of Commerce, pull your own weight. Pull your own weight. And if you can't pull it, then we're going to bring somebody in here who will. But we're going to take that money back, and we are going to find a way to help our citizens who are so desperately in need. It breaks my heart to think of the money that is being wasted in this room when we have $107 million in debt and rising, I might add. Now, let me make another point. And Mayor, I do appreciate so very much you're giving me some extra time. Let me make another point, and remember this till the day you die. There is no casino. Do not, do not think you have money that you don't have. You will know you have money, that the city has money, when that check has cleared, been deposited in the city's bank account that says Bristol, Virginia City. Then you know we've got money. Not until. Beware of false assumptions, gentlemen. We may be in this for the long haul. It may be a hard, hard time. It may be a very hard time. People are being told, people like me, stay home. I do and I don't. I'm down here. But at any rate, gentlemen, I don't think you've used this money for the highest and the best. Take it back. And let's get our minds together and find out how can we help the citizens of Bristol, Virginia. That's my, that's what I want. The small businesses, the individuals, the food, the food pantries are empty. They need help. But we can't do that with that money. But by George, we can figure out something else to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the extra time.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Marnie. That was the only person that had signed up to speak. If there's anyone else that would like to speak, please come up to the podium.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Councilmen. I'm Phil Dingus, born and raised here in Bristol, Virginia, graduate of Virginia High. I'm a property owner in Arlington and a business owner. I don't usually come down here unless I've got something that's germane to what we're looking at. And we're on the threshold of a social explosion here in Bristol. And my kudos to your, to your leadership and everything that you did to bring the casino to fruition. Seventy-one percent of the electorate voted it in, and I'm kind of, I also voted it in. But 20 years ago, my family and I moved to East Central Mississippi to take care of my wife's aging parents. I'm a clinical counselor, therapist, psychologist. I own life works here in town. Back then, I was just a, I had a clinic up in Bottotac County, Virginia, when we moved to Mississippi. The Mississippi Benetchocton Indians were just opening up the casinos in Philadelphia, Silver Star and Golden Moon, to be exact. And just like around here, there was a lot of trepidation and fear of the social collateral damage that would come from such an opening with process and impulse control addictions like gambling, substance abuse running rampant, you know, drinking and all. And so I made it my duty down there to open up a clinic to deal with these process addictions and people that had got the monkey on their back, so to speak. The statistics don't sound like a whole lot. About 5% out of every 100 addicts of any type end up being gambling addicts. In the whole of society, that's about 0.3% of the society at large will have a process addiction due to gambling. Now, the Virginia Lottery, the Tennessee Lottery, the Powerball, I mean, now, it's hard to tell where certain influences start and where some end, you know? And I really don't think, having seen it in Mississippi, that it's going to be, the social collateral damage is not necessarily at all going to be bad enough to outweigh the economic boon that we're going to experience from this. But we need to get, we need to address this on the front end. We need for these people to realize, sorry, I lost it too. We need for the people to realize the 29% that have a fear, whether it's basis or not, that that fear's been addressed. It would be really nice if we were to have a process of recovery, that's just a working title of possibly, a possible clinic that we could have, either in conjunction with Hard Rock or just on our own, just to know, for people to know that there's a place that they can go that knows, one, how to deal with what they're, what they're facing. I've seen people lose everything. The secretary of my banker in Philadelphia, Mississippi, she never smoked a cigarette, never drunk a beer, and started going out to Silver Star, lost her house, lost her car, lost everything. She was, you know, and it was just a pitiful case. And those cases are extreme, but they do happen. Anyway, I just want to, I know everyone's aware of this. I know you all are aware of this. I just want to be, one, I've dealt with it personally. I'm semi-retired, but I can still help in the process. And thank you for listening to me. I mean, we can get a consortium of churches together. We can work through, celebrate recoveries. There's a thousand different ways that we can attack this. But I think that the populace should know that we are addressing this in front of the curve. Okay? Thanks so much. Appreciate you all.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Dingus. Appreciate that. Anybody else that would like to speak? All right. If there's nobody else, we'll move to item D, adoption of the agenda.
I'd like to make a few changes here. I'd move that we adopt the agenda, with the exception, we would postpone item E, the closed session, and also postpone of the regular agenda, item three and item four.
Okay.
Excuse me, what did you say on this thing? What about I agree?
To postpone item three and to postpone item four.
And item E.
And item E.
All right. So we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the changes mentioned. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Clerk, please call her on.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Right. Regular agenda. Item number one, public hearing on proposed charter changes. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And Mr. Eads, I guess you'll present the staff report?
Counsel, two weeks ago, we went over some proposed charter changes. And this is a summary of what those changes would be. And this will be the same presentation I'd make later on when, I think it's item number six, when it comes to the charter provisions. So you can see, 206, paragraph one, we take out "and gambling places." And then paragraph 12, we remove any issue as related to Bristol, Tennessee police officers in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Referendum, you know, I requested some language from everyone in regards to referendum language. Mr. Mumpower responded that he believes referendum language should include "must petition the court," and we should not give future councils or city management any wiggle room on this item. The intent is not to require referendum on any specific principal amount, but to prevent any and all, quote, "new geo-bond debt, new loans, or other legal financial contract obligation," end quote, "when the city has debt levels that exceed the state's required maximum 70%." We can discuss a 70% level, but something in that range. So the language I've proposed tonight is, upon a four-fifths affirmative vote of council, the city council shall petition the circuit court for the city of Bristol, Virginia, to order a referendum when the city seeks to borrow funds by issuing new general obligation debt, obtaining a new loan, running into a legal financial contract obligation when the city is in excess of 70% of the legal debt limit as prescribed by the Constitution of Virginia and the statutory authority. Based on this language here, this language here would actually prevent us from charging anything on our credit card because that is a legal contract obligation. So this is something that needs to be worked out. I recognize we have not talked about referendum language in the past two years. We anticipated the language is going to be in place in January of 19. However, that did not happen. Due to the General Assembly pulling that from our request, we haven't discussed it since. And this is something that really needs to be looked at more closely, in my opinion, before we jump to conclusion as to what the referendum language should be. Powers and duties with respect to the budget, section 504 and 1003. Here, we, I will present the budget no later than the second Tuesday in April. There were conflicting dates between those two charter provisions. 603, the general counsel for the city, we would take out head of the Department of Law. We do not have a Department of Law. We take that out, put general counsel for the city, and then we would also add the city attorney. May appoint assistant city attorneys who shall be attorneys-at-law licensed to practice under the laws of the Commonwealth. Only changes there. These are things that I felt like we had a consensus on last week, or two weeks ago. Use Services Department is deleted. Planning Commission, we just changed that. You can see in red, we take out owning real property. Basically, you just have to be a citizen of the city of Bristol, Virginia. We take out Bristol, Virginia Utilities Board as section 15.2 hyphen 7200, that SEC, takes care of the BDU Board provision for our charter. Additional appropriations, we would change this language to follow the state code. Appropriations and additions to those contained in the appropriation ordinance may be made by the council pursuant to Virginia Code Section 15.2, 2507, amendment of budget. And here is the code section in regards to amendment of the budget. Disposition of unencumbered balances and incurring liabilities. I can't hardly read that. I'm getting younger, I guess. At the close of each fiscal year, the unexpended balance of any appropriation shall revert to the fund from which it was appropriated, subject to reappropriation by city council in the next fiscal year. No city liability shall be incurred by an officer or employee of the city, except in accordance with the provisions of the appropriation made by council. Investigation into city affairs. Changed this one just a little bit. It was extremely broad as to who could investigate certain items as it related to the city and boards or commissions of the city. Just narrowed this down that the council, city manager, or city attorney should have the power to investigate city affairs. And the council, city manager, or city attorney should have the power to subpoena witnesses, administer oaths, and compel the production of evidence relating to any person, officer, board, commission, authority, or other entity that conducts business with the city of Bristol, Virginia. Keep going. To produce such books and papers may be summoned by such council or officer before the judge of the general district court of Bristol, Virginia. And then I just changed a little typo there on general district court. So that is the charter changes that have been discussed last week and what is before you tonight on the public hearing and the first reading of the ordinance. That must be yours.
Yeah. That's the, that's item number two. All right. Thank you, Mr. Eads. No one had signed up to speak on, at the public hearing. However, if anyone does have a comment, you're more than welcome to make one. Mr. Paul.
Thank you. I apologize for getting to the meeting a little bit late so I didn't have a chance to sign up. For the record, I'm not speaking on behalf of the planning commission, but as a member of the planning commission. The planning commission makes recommendations for code concerning property. As such, it seems entirely appropriate to me, anyway, others may have different opinions. But it seems entirely appropriate to me that a member of the planning commission would then, be appropriate to have a requirement that a member that is making, whose primary responsibility is to deal with property, should him or herself own property. As such, I would recommend that that requirement stay. I know that there have been arguments made that it amounts to a poll tax. However, there is no such constitutional right to be on the planning commission. That's a position for which a person applies, arguably runs, and is appointed. And it would be my opinion and impression that owning property would be a qualifier for making such recommendations for code regarding property. Thank you.
Counsel, in regards to that, I think the city needs to be very cognizant of the fact of what you are limiting a citizen to do by virtue of owning property. Is it a poll tax in a sense of a traditional poll tax that harkens back to the days of, prior to civil rights? It harkens back to the days of prior to civil rights, not necessarily. But by requiring someone to own property, you're probably hurting some of the people that cannot necessarily afford to own property, but nonetheless have made Bristol their home. And they're just as invested in the city as someone who owns a home or owns any other piece of property. So I would caution counsel when it comes to requiring a ownership provision to be a member of the Planning Commission, IDA, or for that matter, city council. Because city council, there is no requirement for a council member to own property. So if a council member is not required to own property, and this council is the one that is appropriating funds, why in the world would a council require a planning commission member to own property?
All right, thank you, Mr. Pollard, for your comment. Mr. Eads, is there anyone else who would like to speak? It's public hearing. All right, hearing no further comment, I'll close the public hearing and move to item number two, CARES Act COVID-19 Fund, Discussion of Fund Appropriation. And staff report, I believe that's you, Mr. Bradlin.
Members of council, the city of Bristol has received two disbursements of federal coronavirus relief funds from the Commonwealth of Virginia, each in the amount of $1.4 million. The total received has been $2,924,840. These funds have earned interest in a separate checking account. $13,705 approximately was expended in fiscal year 20. $2,913,758 are appropriated for fiscal year 21. These funds are required to be expended by December 30, 2020. Council has received a list of projects approved by the committee and then approved by council. As we approach the deadline to spend these funds down, staff will need some flexibility between the projects due to the nature of certain items to be purchased and the deadline for funds to be expended. Any remaining funds will be expended on approved projects, sheriff's department inmate housing due to COVID-19, small business grants, or school emergency COVID-19 needs. Staff wants to clarify that these funds have been appropriated by fund for accounting and audit purposes, giving staff flexibility to move between projects if needed, if some items were unable to be obtained or the funds were unable to be expended for that project by December 30. There is no extension with this. If we do not extend these monies by December 30, they will be returned. Staff recommends that council clarify that Fund 35, the CARES Act COVID-19 Fund expenditures are appropriated by fund, with city staff having the flexibility to transfer between departments and between project line items within the departments to facilitate the expenditure guidelines as set forth in the Coronavirus Relief Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradlin. Public comment, I think, Ms. Marnie, you wanted to speak to this?
I thought that we had done one of the bodies to it.
Three and four.
Oh, three and four.
Yeah.
Oh, hold on, I can't get something to say here.
I've never known you to be a loss for words.
Doesn't happen often. Gentlemen, I would make a point here of caution to our city councilman and the city manager. If we don't need this money, give it back. Give it back. Now, one thing that I would urge you all to be extremely careful of is, if you create, you or somebody else in the city, if you create a "need," quote-unquote, for this money, be sure it is not a recurring need, so that when this money runs out and this bug is killed off or whatever, we have not got something that has to be sustained. That is not the point of this money. This money is to help out right now, this minute, in an emergency. It is not to create a situation that will forever and eternally have to be sustained. So I would urge counsel, don't try to create a use for money we really don't need. Give it back. Give it back. I may as well stay up here. If I'm the last one, I may as well stay here. You're having number three?
No. No, three is...
No, three.
Yeah, it, three and four got tabled, postponed, so. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Marnie. Anyone else that may want to speak to this? All right, so what's the pleasure of counsel?
I would move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Farnum, or Vice Mayor Farnum. Any discussion? Clerk, call her all.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
No.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
No.
Hartley.
Yes.
All right, let's see, item number three and four have been tabled. So we'll move to item number five, a supplemental appropriation of $247,000. Staff report?
Sure. Mayor and members of council, the listed items are an additional appropriation to the fiscal year 21 budget. They are all to the general fund. City attorney, insurance proceeds to be expended on legal expenses, $10,000. Transfers to the IDA, economic incentives of $162,000. This is economic incentive payments that will flow through the IDA to CBH Bristol LLC, also known as the Sessions Hotel. The city incentive agreement is one-half of meals and lodging taxes paid by the entity. The tourism incentive here of $75,000 is a transfer to the IDA as well. And it is 1% of local sales tax and 1% of the sales tax remitted to the state that the state sends back to the city. And that agreement was last approved by council on April 10 of 2018. Staff recommends that council approve the supplemental appropriation as listed.
And counsel, this supplemental appropriation requires a four-one affirmative vote.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Eads, Ms. Bradlin. Public comment, no one signed up, but anyone would like to speak? Okay, hearing none, what's the pleasure of counsel?
Move for approval of the supplemental appropriation.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion?
Yeah, can we have some clarity on the tourism incentive? Is that going to the Sessions also? That is not going directly to the Sessions. That's actually going to a lender that was for gap financing to fund part of the Sessions Hotel. And the economic incentives is all for the Sessions also? That is, that's the performance agreement where half the meals and lodging tax goes back to the Sessions. And yeah, that's it, that's that.
I know the Sessions agreement was before some of us up here. Does anyone remember offhand exactly when that started and when it became finalized?
Give me two seconds. The initial Sessions agreement was in, I think, 2014. I'm sorry, the initial Sessions agreement was December 19 of 2013. That was between the city, the IDA, and the contractors. A no-net-loss agreement of $1.2 million from sales, lodging, and meals taxes until paid. It was then amended on February 25 of 2014, which then included the Tobacco Commission, city of Bristol, CBH Bristol LLC. In exchange, the grantee received $265,000 grant from the Tobacco Commission for the benefit of CBH Bristol LLC. In exchange, they had to provide 75 full-time employees, quarterly payroll of $434,000, taxable assets of $19.8 million, and employment obligations must be met no later than 36 months after the base quarter. Then it was amended again, May the 5th of 17. The city, the IDA, and CBH Bristol, the no-net-loss was amended down from $1.2 million to $850,000. And then there was the tourism development financing piece of $1.7 million that was involved. If I'm not mistaken, that discussion had been ongoing, that $1.7 million had been going on well prior to May of 17. That was something, at the time, I think Mr. Curcio was still the IDA attorney, and it was something that the IDA had agreed to at that time, and then counsel approved it as well. And then on April the 12th of 18, it was amended. And that included, that amendment was for a deed of trust to be in the third position behind a first for $8.7 million and a second for $4.02 million. So basically, they just increased their initial first and second deeds of trust by roughly a million dollars, little over a million dollars.
So just to clarify, the reason that this is a supplemental appropriation wasn't in the budget was because the Sessions hadn't opened yet. And when you were developing the budget, of course, was right around the time that they had postponed their opening, and you had no idea if and when they would open.
That's right, this was, you know, we were preparing the budget, March and April, and at that time, no one knew if and when the Sessions would open. And this is just part of the situation the city's found itself in. And the sad fact is, the timeline is staggering. Just for the record, Mr. Eads, I would like for you to state the timeline in which the city has to, can carry out this obligation. Your economic incentives are carried out until $850,000 is paid. And I think it was amended, let me get it pulled up. I don't have, I don't have the specific agreements on my OneDrive. If I'm not mistaken, I think it's a 10-year agreement. It was until it was paid, but I think it's a 10-year, but I don't have that in front of me, so I'd hate to comment on that. But the one that really extends out for an extended period of time is that tourism incentive piece, which goes till 2045, I believe, is that?
Give me a read. Says, "This allocation shall continue until the sooner of 20 years from the date of the first quarterly allocation, or the associated gap financing loan is extinguished."
So 2040 at this point? 20 years.
They've been trying to get the city to pay for that position since they started. It's just going on, they want the city to pay for it.
Well, we find ourselves here tonight under contracts, legal binding contracts. And to deny this is a lawsuit. And we won't win. Our hands are tied. This is sad. We have got to do better going forward. It is important for the people to vote people in position that has their best interest at heart. And if this, things like this, if this is not a wake-up call, then I don't know what is. The people have got to pay attention when it comes time to vote people in, to run this city, to know where they stand, and know more about them. Because this is just a bunch of blind people leading the blind.
Yeah, I'd agree with you. That's why the Industrial Development Authority's got a lot of responsibility in this. And we have said for a long time, the IDA, where's your return on investment process? Where's the process that you put in writing, the return on investment that the taxpayers get when you put the hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars that the city manager just said, you lay that out there, you can project. People want to say, no, we can't predict that, bull crap. You can project all the development on that interstate street based on hotels and restaurants. It was completely packed. What revenues this city would come back to, and then calculate that ROI. And you know what, it doesn't work out. You know, it doesn't work out. So we've got to get to where the IDA has a financial obligation, and a legal financial obligation, to put a return on investment document in front of this council and put their signature in blood on that document, that that ROI pays for itself in a reasonable time period, which is typically five to eight years. And if you can't pay for it in five to eight years, you've got no business doing it. Because the market shifts too much after that time period. And here we are, obligating the citizens for two decades, almost three, and we've not run a single ROI. We've not done a single tax intake calculation because we think we're smarter than everybody else. It's basic financial mathematics. It's really not that hard. But that's what gets the city in trouble. When its council does not demand, and the city management group does not demand, the CFO does not demand that that be done. You should have that in your internal controls. The IDA should be demanded to put together these financial projects and ROIs, to prove to everybody, right, full transparency, that it makes sense to do. Done before a lot of us, you know, were in the seats, right?
I just want to make sure, Councilman Mumpower, that I do add there with the reference to the CFO, this was done before Tamara Spradlin was ever employed by the city of Bristol.
Done before most of us was here, right? But now, but now we know, but now we know, right? Now we know what led up to getting us in this position.
Well, I tell you, the answer is, you don't do these incentives anymore. I've yet to see an incentive that this city's entered into that is worth the paper it's written on. The city has been on the losing end of every single incentive we have put out there. And it has to stop. It's not worth, you all have no idea the amount of time that staff puts in to calculating incentive payments every quarter, to making sure those things are done right, to dealing with the outside agencies. It, now, part of it's our job, I mean, I'm not going to sit here and try to shirk responsibility for what's our job. But at the end of the day, the amount of time and effort that goes into these losing propositions is absolutely ridiculous. It has to stop. And I can tell you right now, we have a world-known international entertainment group getting ready to break ground in the city of Bristol. If someone wants to come to Bristol, they can come to Bristol. We don't need to pay for it. Exactly.
Amen.
So... Well, I've said it before, if I bring, if I bring another incentive package before this council, I'm seriously sick, and y'all should probably fire me. I mean, absent doing an ROI that we can show this is going to work. Because I can sit here and on one hand tell you five... Because I can sit here and on one hand tell you five businesses at least that have not lived up to their obligations since they've entered into agreements, I would say since 2011 or '12. And very few businesses live it up, live up to it. And that's no fault of the business. I mean, the business world is tough. We know the statistics from when you open a business to the likelihood of success. It's very slim in those first five years. And we're playing venture capitalists. That's exactly right. People have figured out a way to have the taxpayers go out on a limb and take the risk for their endeavors, instead of putting their own money in. Now, that's the whole part of capitalism, is an investor should believe in their product enough to put their own money on the table, and not ask the citizens and the taxpayers to put it up there instead of them.
What's walking in the night?
Well, and one thing I will say that this council has done, we've had a couple of economic development projects in the city since we've all been involved, and we've protected ourselves with deed of trust, bonds, and things like that, so that we're protected moving forward. So, you know, if there is a, if there ever is an incentive package moving forward for a business, we have to make sure we protect ourselves in a manner that we know we can pay, that we can pay it back if necessary.
I, I agree with a lot of what I've heard. Stuff like this should not have happened, and I think it started when none of us were here. But yeah, going forward, we need to be very careful. I mean, this is going through 2040, I'm, I'll be grandpa age at 2040. So, that's a long way off, and that is, that is a long obligation for us to be making as a city, for people who are not born yet, who'll be paying taxes for that. So, so we need to be good stewards in situations like this. You know, I'm all about, I'm all about new businesses, and the sessions is beautiful and lovely, but we need to be very careful with what we hand out, especially something this long. There needs to be some type of proof that there is a return on investment with it, you know, as, as Mr. Mumpower said.
If they can't pull their weight, go somewhere else.
And I think, yeah, and I think that a lot of, I think a lot of this, you know, as the city manager said, we're going to have something to draw other businesses into the city very soon, you know, God willing. So, I don't think we need to be handing out incentives going forward unless there is some incredible circumstance that I don't, that I can't think of. So, I mean, you know, unfortunately, we are legally bound to do this one. We're assigned onto this, but in the future, I think we need to be very, very careful with, with this type of thing. Yeah, we're, we're legally bound to do this, yeah.
We're legally bound to. But you know, my message is this, this is, this is very systemic. This is not just business incentives. It's a systemic issue that the city's had in all endeavors, all endeavors. They've not run the proper ROI on the landfill, on the falls, just, just name them. And not a single one of those would have ever passed an ROI calculation, which would have said, "Why are you doing this?" So it's a systemic problem, which tells us, we need to have a stronger financial policy in place to prevent this systemic thing from continuing, because we're the only ones that will stop it. You know, from the next 10 years from another project popping up that somebody thinks is a grand, you know, endeavor. But that, that's what gets you in trouble. You know, throwing $40 million at something, when you have no chance of getting that money back, right? No chance. $33 in trash doesn't even get it back, right? So it, it's a, it's a bigger issue than just the hotels and the business projects, right? It's, it's, that's the way the city has done business, and it needs to stop.
Well, the issue is, the city has gone into enterprise-related activities that are not traditional government functions. And that is not the purpose of government, to go into those types of functions. The landfill is one of those, the falls is another one. If it wasn't for those two entities, two projects in the city, I seriously doubt any of us would be sitting in these chairs tonight.
Oh, and I forgot OptiNet. Excuse me.
And so, that's BVU.
This council was the one who thought that was a good idea.
But, the, so, I mean, we, you know, there's no reason to do anything other than traditional government functions, which is provide for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. And that's it.
Yep.
Do we have any more discussion, comment? Clerk, Colerole.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
No.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. All right. Item number six, presentation of fiscal year 21, first quarter financial update. Ms. Bradlin?
Mayor, members of council, this is the finance update for the first quarter of fiscal year 21, data as of September 30th, 2020. This data is prepared on a cash basis. Revenues the city has received and expenditures the city has paid, this is unaudited data. General fund summary with a budget of $52.9 million, revenues of $9.8 million, 19% of budget, expenditures of $12.3 million, 23% of budget for a fund deficit of $2.4 million. Solid waste disposal fund summary with a budget of $5.8 million, revenues of $1.4 million, 25% of budget, expenditures of $1.3 million, 22% of budget for a fund balance at September 30th of $176,000. Capital projects fund with a budget of $10 million, revenues of $135,000, expenditures of $22,000, for a balance of $113,000, made up primarily of a prior year VDOT receivable. Transit fund with a budget of $477,000, revenues of $37,000, expenditures of $92,000, for a balance of a deficit of $54,938, which is a federal receivable for that fund. Here's the general fund revenue summary of the $9.8 million received by the general fund. $4.4 million is from local sources, $4.5 million is from state sources, and $865,000 of that is from federal sources. This is what our general fund revenue looks like, what monies we have received. The blue, our, our local revenue, is 45%. It is 65% of the budget. The state is red at 46%, it is 28% of the budget. And the green is our federal revenue, it is at 9%, it is 6% of budget. As we approach the December 5th tax deadline, the blue, or our local revenue, will grow to be more in line with the budget number there. Our revenue report, if all revenues were received evenly throughout the year, the even benchmark at September 30th would be 25%. General property taxes is at 2.31%, which is normal for this time of the fiscal year as we approach the December 5th tax deadline. Other local taxes is at 25.69%. Permits and privilege fees is down at 11%. This budget variance is due primarily to building permits, inspection fees below the budget, right at 12%. Fines and forfeitures is 9.86%, and that is below the benchmark primarily due to the traffic program. Revenue from money and property is at 30.45% due to a rental payment from fiscal year 20 that was received in this fiscal year. Charges for services, 31%. Miscellaneous revenue is at 56.47%. That is due to a large receipt of the first quarter of this fiscal year, and it will trend up, upwards for most of the fiscal year. Recovered costs is at 20%. State revenue is at 31.52%, and federal revenue is at 26%. Financial data graphs, fiscal year 17 is shown in orange, 18 is in gray, 19 is in yellow, fiscal year 20 is the red, and fiscal year 21 is shown in green. Local sales and use tax, up from all periods. COVID-19 has apparently not had the impact here that we projected, but we are going to continue to monitor this. Consumer utility taxes are holding steady. Cigarette taxes are about even with the prior year. You can see here the lodging tax, you can see the COVID-19 impact of the lodging tax from the previous year, and meals tax are down as well for the previous years. This is what our sales tax revenue with a budget of $3.3 million looks like as it is received by the city. The blue is the three-year average, and the orange is the current year. Sales tax runs two months behind, meaning that revenues received in September were actually for the month of July. This is what our lodging tax with a budget of $1.275 million looks like as it is received by the city. September collections here are for the month of August, and this graph clearly does show the impact of COVID-19 on the city's lodging tax. City's meals tax with a budget of $4.2 million as it is received by the city. September collections here are for the month of August, and this graph also shows the effect COVID-19 has had on meals tax revenue. We're making some recovery there. Not sure of what the next several months will bring for the city here. The target revenue report, the gra, the previous, the previous graph shows actual-to-actual comparison between fiscal years. This report shows the fiscal year 21 budget to the actual comparison. Total positive variances here are $368,718. Local sales and use tax has a positive budget variance of $168,000. Consumer utility tax, a small positive budget variance. Tax on records and wells, small positive budget variance. Cigarette taxes, a small positive budget variance as well. Lodging tax is a negative budget variance of $27,000. Restaurant meal tax, for the first quarter, based on the budget number annualized throughout the year, $221,000 positive budget variance. Once again, we will continue to monitor that, to keep, to see what the effects of COVID-19 continue to do there. The electric consumption tax, a small negative variance. Admission tax, a negative budget variance, and communications tax, a small negative budget variance as well. And we have reduced the budget for communications tax to be more in line with fiscal year 20 actual, and we'll need to continue to look at that as we go throughout the year. So our COVID-19 revenue impact, what did we do with this year's fiscal year 21 budget in response to COVID-19? For sales tax, we took a full year reduction of 10%. And you can see in July, we were down 4%, August down 10%, but September rebounded. So, for the year, we're showing a positive budget variance to where we benchmarked that. Meals tax, we reduced for half a year, up 50%. Mr. Eads likes to remind me that that is a full, equal to a full year at 25%. You can see the activity of our meals here, we are showing some recovery there. Lodging, we also took a half year at 50%, also equal to a 25% for the entire year. And you can see, there's not stable, that seems to have not stabilized there. Missions tax, it's a smaller budget item than the other revenue items we listed, but still a indicator of, of what people are doing in the City of Bristol. We did budget for a 70% full year reduction there, and you can see that, you can see what's happening with the admissions tax. Our general fund expenditure summary, and once again, if expenditures were earned, expended evenly throughout the fiscal year, the benchmark there would be 25%. Government administration is at 23%. Judicial administration, right at 23% as well. Public safety at 22%. Public works, 21%. Health, welfare, and social services, 24.81%. Education is at 30%. That is not unusual for the beginning of the fiscal year. For those in the finance committee and who've seen this presentation before, the schools, primarily in the beginning of the fiscal year, only their SOQ state funding comes in, their non-incentive, or their incentive-based funding comes in later in the fiscal year. So historically, they have needed a little more cash from the local government on the front end of the fiscal year. Parks, recreation, cultural, 23%. Community development, 20%. Non-departmental, 35%. That is primarily for two reasons. One, we have a revenue sharing agreement that we pay half of for the year in July, and also, our insurance, the city's insurance is paid in July for the year. So our debt is at 15.88%, and transfers are at 20%. Total expenditures for the general fund through September 30th, 2020, the first quarter, at 23.37. This is what the general fund expenditures look like, how the city's money is spent. The data on the left is the actual expenditures, the data on the right is budgeted expenditures, just so you can compare where we're spending it based to where did, compared to where did we budget it. Public safety's at 27%. Health, welfare, and social services, 17%. Education, 16%. Public works, 10%. Government administration, 5.95%. Debt, 5%. Parks, recreation, and cultural, 5%. Transfers, 3%. Judicial administration, 3%. Non-departmental, 2%, and community development, 1.73%. If you compare the actual of how we spend our money to how we budgeted, we were going to spend our money, we're consistently in line there. Transitioning to solid waste, revenues of $1.4 million, 25.58% of budget, expenditures of $1.3 million, 22.54% for a slight fund balance there of $176,747. Disposal revenue for the period was at 27% of budget. Collection percent, collection revenue was at 25% of budget. Non-operating revenue is at 12%, and that is because we have not, we budgeted some prior debt savings to help offset this fiscal year's debt savings, and those funds have not moved over yet. Disposal expenditures are at 17%. Collection expenditures are at 15%. And I just always like to remind council, and those listening to this presentation, that debt expenditures make up 35% of the annual budget of our solid waste disposal Our debt service schedule. Here is the information on the city's upcoming debt schedule. I have been asked by the finance committee to present this information quarterly, so that decision-makers and the public see this information regularly, and we're all aware of, of what the near future holds for the City of Bristol as related to our debt service. This is citywide general obligation bonded debt. It is backed by the full faith and credit of the City of Bristol. This does include the recent completed debt refinance. What you can see in the first two columns is the citywide bond payments will increase to $7.4 million through fiscal year 27, and the shortfall related to that increase. Then detailed out is the refinance savings and how that will be used in the current and upcoming budget cycles. In this fiscal year, you see a positive of $233,955. That was a result of the May 2020 refinance, which is budgeted in the fiscal year 21 debt service reserve, and the fall 2020 bond refinance savings that will be split between the general fund and solid waste. So that gives us a net payment for each year, of which a portion of the $1 million that we currently budget to the debt service reserve will offset. And then also, in fiscal year 24, the revenue sharing agreement pays off, and we will be able to allocate that toward that as well. The committed reserve funds column there, city council has, has committed $2 million for our debt service reserve plan, a piece of that at the end of fiscal year 19, and a piece of that at the end of fiscal year 20. So what this schedule really shows you, that using, allocating everything we, we have up there to the debt service schedule, that we actually get into fiscal year 26 with our current debt service payment plan. I'd like to remind council that, that the budgeted monies we have in the current fiscal year for the debt service reserve, we'll get a, we'll get... for the debt service reserve will get us, if those monies stay there, which I don't see them coming out, that this schedule will get us into fiscal year '27. This is the city's current debt service plan.
I have a question. That current revenue sharing, is that $350,000, the Washington County deal we have with the old Lowe's building?
Yes, sir.
So now that Royal King is up and operational, that $350 should start dwindling away effective this year?
Yes, sir.
So according to the revenues that they turn in, we could buy all rights. Not owe that $350 this time next year. If their sales is good, and they continue to sell what I think they're selling. I mean, they're doing good.
Yes, and we have not received the first information on that. We expect to receive that within the next 20 days.
Okay. I would like an update on that when you get that in. Because I can see that quickly dwindling away.
To that point, you said we made our first payment this year on the revenue sharing agreement?
That was the, that was actually the, I believe, I'm not going to speak here, that was actually some tax sharing, not this revenue sharing.
Well, I was going to say, so I think we make those payments twice a year. So that would, what Royal King has done up there would be included, I guess, before you make the first payment, if there's any offset.
Yes, before we make the first payment this year, it will reduce that.
Okay.
Do you account for that separate, since it's a special revenue sharing agreement?
I'm sorry?
In other words, the revenues are taken in and the sales tax that comes off of it. Are you accounting for that as a separate line item? Because normally, we get into these discussions to where you don't really know how much sales tax is coming in on a business like that because of confidentiality. So how are you keeping track of that as an accounting line item to know how it compares to that $350?
We won't see the revenue side of that as a line item. It will reduce this payment. We will not get revenue in and pay $350 out. We will just reduce the payment out of $350.
My question, how do you know how much of that?
We'll have to verify that with Washington County. That information will come from Washington County, because we don't have access to that. The cash balance information, the TAN did expire December 31st, 2018. It was not renewed. It was not in fiscal year '20 appropriation ordinance, and it is not in the fiscal year '21 appropriation ordinance. The operating cash balance at September 30th, 16.6 million. A year ago, September 30th, 2019, it was 13.5 million. Two years ago, 10.7 million. And three years ago, September 30th, 2017, 3.5 million. There are CD balances, our reserve, emergency reserve CD of 1.4 million, $2 million for the debt service. And then that small amount is solid waste debt service from prior refinance savings. You can see the TAN information at the bottom of this slide, which ranges from 1.7 drawn in the fall of fiscal year '17, all the way back to fiscal year '13, '14, when there was a large borrowing there. Once again, the operating cash balance, 16.6 million at September 30th. Important to remember that a piece of that is the liner accrual at June 30th, 2020, $596,342, bringing the cash balance, available cash balance, down to about 16 million. It's important to show that liner accrual there. We were not, there was no liner accrual budgeted in fiscal year '21. So very important that we keep that identified there. There's the CD balances again. And this graph shows the city's cash balance at month end. The red line is the current year. The gray line is fiscal year '20. The orange line is '19, and the blue line is '18. You can see the trend here, how as, once we get to the December 5th tax deadline, how the cash sort of moves upward in the city's general fund. I also would like to point out here, and I pointed this out the last time I presented to council, but at July 2017, you can see the cash balance was just below $5 million. I forgot to say one thing in the very beginning, when I talked about the negative general fund deficit in the beginning. It is absolutely normal for the city to operate this time of the year as we approach the December 5th tax deadline with a fund deficit. That is not out of the ordinary. Actually, it is ordinarily how we operate. That's why it's so important that we have that unassigned fund balance, we have that cash balance stable at June 30th. Thank you, council.
I just want to make a comment. It's a good picture that you presented there, but we can't forget the landfill closure accruals. We've ignored those. Those are very important. Those are significant amounts of money. And so those can't continue to be just ignored. So those accruals need to get on the books for this budget cycle. They need to stay there.
Any comments, questions? Appreciate the update. There's good information, probably a little better than I think anyone would have thought when we started putting the budget together and looking through the summer. Some things are up. Of course, some are down, maybe not down as much as we thought, some maybe a little more. And just, you know, those are all very subject to change. And with that, normally, I start the meeting by reminding people to be careful and to social distance, wear a mask, and, you know, wash your hands. If you're sick, stay at home. And I'd encourage people to do that because we don't want to see our businesses close. You can see the effects in the financial data of what that can have. So, but we also want our community to be safe. Okay. There's no further comment. We'll move to item F, ordinances, first reading, number seven, ordinance 20-4 to amend Chapter 50, Article 1 and 2 of the City Code, staff report. Ms. Morgan?
Who's lines for Sally? I just want to real quick summarize where we are and then be able to answer any questions. But as you all know, the planning commission started work on this ordinance in 2017 and went through a lot of tedious, actually, work. Thank you, Mr. Wingard, spent a lot of time on that. And just, we, that resulted in a first draft in July 2019. And then last fall, we started working on the maps to go with the text changes. We had open house sessions January 2020. And then with COVID hitting, this thing slowed a little bit down. But we produced from comments and input, we produced a final draft, June 15th of this year. And then public hearings were held in August and September. Had two separate public hearings, planning commission and city council, one joint, one in September, and then another joint one in October. The last planning commission meeting, October 19th, the planning commission recommended forward to you all the draft document. After the last, the public hearing in September, there was an addendum created that was some added text changes, as well as added map changes. Six, and that's, that was also posted on the website, I think, prior to the October public hearing. Six map changes were made and included in an addendum, as well as some other minor typographical changes as well. And those were posted in an addendum and as part of the draft document. At the October 19th meeting, three map changes were discussed and decided on to include in their recommendation. Two of those were retaining the current zoning that two different property owners had asked. It's retaining M1 zoning on Bob Morrison Boulevard where the Bill Gatten property is, on Bob Morrison, not making the change that we had originally proposed. And then retaining B3 zoning on map parcels on Old Avenue and Highway, 263A, 15 and 16, and to retain the B3 zoning on those parcels. And then the third map change that they're recommending is from the Southern States property to create basically an R1 buffer 50 feet back from the Robin Circle property line, so that the FRD zone takes up most of the property as proposed, but not all of it, just leaving along Robin Circle, a buffer of 50 feet along that southern edge. So those three map changes were part of the recommendation to you all. The map is incorporated, the map has those changes on it. It's incorporated by text into the text in the ordinance. And there's only one additional change that came to my attention after their meeting this month, and that's on page 59 of the ordinance. A little bit of a change was, we had proposed for small accessory buildings, a setback being reduced from 10 feet to 5 feet. That would be like, you know, a storage shed, anything less than 256 square feet. There was a request for us to consider that in the larger lots for R1 and R1A, we didn't really need to go to the five-foot setback to keep at 10, because there are larger lots, larger widths. And I did email that change to the planning commission members. I didn't get any negative response on that. So that's marked in the ordinance on page 59. So I'm glad to answer your questions.
Well, I think you answered mine. I want to make sure, so the offset, the citizens that live up around Robin Circle was satisfied, right? They had the concern when they were down here about the offset between Southern States and their neighborhood. So you took care of that, it sounds like?
We felt like it was a good compromise, yes.
Okay. And then Mr. Osborne, that was in here that has the business on Old Avenue and Highway, sounds like that was addressed.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, the six that were addressed in the original map revisions was 845 Old Avenue and Highway, Mr. Osborne, 1221 Rhode Island Avenue, that was Mr. Isley, I think, Kenny. And then the Pittstown Road, Oakview, 111 East Mary, and 630 Carter were adjustments that were made based on comments we got. Most of them were just retaining, I guess all of them really were retaining the original zone, not changing it.
Before you, before we move on, Ms. Morgan, I want to thank you for your work. Thank the planning commission for their work and the citizens. There's a lot of public input throughout this process. It's a long process, but I appreciate everybody that worked on this and gave input. And I know there's a lot of deliberation on the best way to proceed. So I appreciate the time and effort that went into getting it finally to this point for us to consider. So, thank you.
You're welcome. We had a hard-working planning commission. Chairman threw it with a lot of meanings as well, so.
Okay. Is there any, no one signed up, but is there anyone that wants to comment in public?
Counsel, I would just ask that this be made by, read by caption only.
Okay.
Oh, no, we'll get, no.
Well, take a vote, and then we'll see.
Okay. Do I have a motion for a first reading of the ordinance by caption only?
I move that we go to the first reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
All right. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. Hearing no discussion, clerk, call roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Lumpauer.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
No.
Hartley.
Yes.
Well, I don't have the ordinance in front of me. Hold on that one, hang on just a second. Let's take it.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 50, Article 1 and 2 of the City Code of ordinances, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Bristol, Virginia, that existing Chapter 50, Article 1 and 2 be removed and replaced with a new Chapter 50, Article 1 and 2, as contained below in appendices A and B to the Article 2.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Item number eight, ordinance 20-5 to amend the charter of the city of Bristol, Virginia. Staff report.
Counsel, this is what I previously covered in the public hearing, with the exception, in this ordinance, you do not have language for the referendum. That's the next item on the agenda. So this just covers the, every item except section 305, which is the referendum language.
Again, anyone, we had the public hearing, but no one signed up to speak here, but if anyone would like. Okay. Hearing none, do I have a motion for a first reading of the ordinance by caption only?
I move for first reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
All right. Have a motion and a second. Hearing none, clerk, call roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Lumpauer.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
An ordinance to request a charter change to the charter for the city of Bristol, Virginia.
All right. Move to item number nine, ordinance 20-6 to amend the charter of the city of Bristol, Virginia, section 3.05. Staff report.
Counsel, this is the referendum provision that has been a topic of discussion for a few years now. As I mentioned previously, the wording of this referendum gives me some concern. I know, Mr. Wingard, I'd mentioned to you yesterday that I have some different language tonight, just due to timing with certain things that went on yesterday in preparation for today, I was unable to draft that language. But the concerns that I have with this language from a legal perspective is discussing, entering into a legal financial contract obligation when the city is in excess of 70% of the legal debt limit. That basically means we could not go charge something on a credit card, which we routinely And just for practical purposes, this city's not going to be at a healthy debt limit until 2035. So we are hamstrung as it is, based on our current debt limit. So I'm not exactly sure how this council wants to move forward with this. I've researched seven cities across the Commonwealth. No city has a binding referendum. Two cities have advisory referendums. The other five cities do not have any language in regards to a referendum. I think we've got to be very careful about moving forward. We do not need an unintended consequence as we move forward. We do not need an unintended consequence as we move forward. I fully respect those concerns, and I understand where you're coming from, but these other cities have never had the financial burden this city has.
Right.
Neither. Now, the credit card, I can understand your reservations, because it's hard to do anything in the world today without a credit card. It's virtually impossible. So we need to work through that. And I think there's a way to work through that. I know that, you know, a lot of people I personally know have prepaid cards. They pay in advance. You know, say the city runs however many, however many hundreds of thousands of dollars on a credit card, you can prepay that card and then order everything as you need it. You know, that is one option. I'm not saying it is the option, but we could think outside the box. But I do see where the city has to have access to be able to use a credit card to order stuff. So that is a major issue. I would also say that this would have an implication on leases, capital leases that we have. When PT and PR leased in '17, I think there were 22 leases on the books. We have whittled that down to five at this time, and I think by July 1 of next year, it goes down to four. Is that right?
June 30, it will be five.
I'm sorry.
And then another one pays off the first part of next fiscal year, so it will be down to four from 22. That is for the general fund, does not include the solid waste, but clearly, we are, we are making progress there to go from 22 down to five at the end of this fiscal year. That, I think that's progress.
I mean, I wished we would have been able to have some more discussion on this, because we truly need it.
I think we definitely need more discussion, because I don't really like the wording, the way this is written now. My understanding was, I was thinking the intent was to, you know, if we drop down below a certain percentage to prevent people up here saying, "Let's do this big project and take on a whole lot of debt." So, so this says, "When obtaining a new loan, entering into a legal financial contract, when the city is in excess of 70% of legal debt limits," which we are right now. So let's just say our legal debt limit was $100 million, and we paid all that debt off, so we have zero debt, and someone up here says, "Well, let's take on this project. It's going to be a great idea. It's going to cost $50 million. Let's go borrow it." In my opinion, this doesn't really protect against, there's no referendum needed in that situation.
That's correct.
So.
You could easily go out and do another falls.
And we want to protect against that.
But 70% is a healthy number. Actually, it's really not, but it's a, it's a workable number. And somehow, some way, we need to get the finances in this city around those numbers. Yeah, the projected is 10 years out, 12 years out, whatever it is. Well, that's the projection current as we sit here today. We've all got our fingers crossed, hoping that everything works out at exit one, at exit one. And that is going to create a robust economy with other businesses coming. So that projection of 10 to 12 years out to get under this 70% load may be five years out if things work out right. But still, we don't know. That money's not in the bank, like was said tonight. But still, the fact remains that this council sees the devastation of misguided leadership, and we need to be responsible leaders and try to put something in place that is a roadblock to where the council's coming behind us, says, "Wait a minute here. This is our limits, and if we go above this, then the citizens are going to come storming in here, saying, 'No, you're not.'" Or it's going to be put on a referendum, and the citizens are going to say, "Yes, you can. We've got to do something. We cannot stick our head in the sand and act like this never happened, because we are financially devastated, and if we can do something about it, then we should for future reference with this city." So we need to talk about this more. I'm not for sure I agree with all the language. I don't know, I'm not an attorney, but I can use a calculator. And things are so far out of tilt, we've got to do something. But we cannot have unintended consequences. The city has to be able to use a credit card. But I do agree that all of our leases should be counted towards debt, because you can get into several million dollars a year with leases very easily. But that is an obligation, just like tonight. We had to vote on an obligation that was made by prior councils. So we've got to be very careful. But when somebody signs their name saying, "We will pay this for this term limit," it is a debt. No matter how you slice it, you owe it. The city owes it. So we need to talk about this more, but we need to do something, and we need to be smart about it and not rush into it. We should have been talking about this a long time ago. Well, and Counsel, I'd also ask you all to go back and look at our financial policies as well. I mean, we do have some pretty strong language in regards to policies. I know that's different than a referendum and things, but it's a very good guideline of what our debt should be and how we plan on getting there. So I would encourage each of you all to look at those financial policies again.
You know, when you're in the business world, and you get your debt up to a level where your cash flow's starting to be impacted, credit cards get taken away, and that's a fact. So it comes down hard when you have a cash flow situation that you're not managing properly, right? And that's the way it works. So whatever we do here, we're trying to say, "Look, when you get your debt load up to that level, you deserve to get your credit cards taken away, because you're mismanaging the finances, right? You keep pushing and pushing and pushing to the point where you wake up, and then you have no place to go." So I have no problem taking the credit cards away. Now, we could talk about if it's, if it's a short-term obligation within a budget cycle, that that's not part of the referendum, right? It's within a short term, it's not, it's not a long-term capital outlay, right? It's within one budget cycle. But if you go put something on a credit card that's outside of one year, two years, three years, you're buying, you know, two or three vehicles or something else, which I'm sure the credit limit would probably allow, that's, that's out of bounds, right? So if it's normal operating cash.
The credit limit wouldn't allow for us to go buy a car, so, and then I don't want people to think that's just cash flow problem, saying, "Taking away credit cards," because there's not a cash flow problem in the city. I mean, what we have is a debt problem.
But I say that because debt, it creates a cash flow problem.
Right, but the credit cards are not the problem with our debt.
No.
I mean, it's the falls in a landfill that is our, our debt problems. It's not, it's not the usage of credit cards.
That's why you could change the language to say, "Long-term debt, long-term legal obligations outside of normal annual budgetary cash flow," you know, which would be exempt. Because you use it to operate.
Right, but I want the public to understand, I don't want the public to think all of a sudden we got a cash flow problem, and credit cards is a problem, because that's not the issue. Now, the majority of these credit cards is department heads needing to order this, needing to order that, correct?
Right.
That's what I would think. Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's normal operating expenses that you would use in any office-type setting for the most part. That's already budgeted for. Right.
And paid in full each month.
That's right. So if it's, that's splitting some hairs there.
Well.
If it's already budgeted for, and it's paid off within the billing cycle.
I, I mean, to me, you know, I guess definitely need to, I think, think through this really hard. I mean, a lot of what I think we want to accomplish, we started on that path with policies. I think that's a good place to add in the short run, but, but when you make this charter change and add this, you know, again, you want to make sure the language accomplishes what you want to and doesn't have any hidden adverse effects. I think, you know, I've been trying to think of different scenarios of what you could do and what you can't do, and to some degree, you know, the, I think part of this, and Mr. Reed's kind of mentioned it when we was having that discussion earlier, is really, to me, I don't, you know, I don't want to restrain what is our normal function of government, the things that we're supposed to do, but, you know, where we made them, if you're trying to avoid the mistakes of the past, I don't know it's as much about the dollars as it is stepping out of bounds into areas that you really probably shouldn't have. So, you know, maybe to set up an enterprise fund or something like that, that, that seems to be more the area where you get into trouble. But clearly, I think as far as going forward, you know, we need to think through this a little more, look at the language very carefully, and try to think through this. You know, that probably would mean that we may not get this this time, but I'd rather wait and make sure we get this right. If this is the path that we go down, then rush in, and then in a year, two, five years, find ourselves, you know, saying, "Well, wait a minute. We didn't think this through quick enough," because, you know, I think, I think the point is, everybody wants to avoid the mistakes of the past. We realize what that is. It's just what is the best mechanism for that, and some of that we've already put into place through policies, but, you know, this is, actually, this would, in some ways, I think, be redundant if you're following the policies that are already in place. I don't know that one of these, you'd, you'd have an issue like that, so, anyway.
But the next council coming in does not have to follow the financial policies. They can strike it down at any time. And if we have something more solid that calls out for a referendum, and they go to change that, then that's a huge red flag for the community.
And it doesn't have to be an obligation for a business venture, an enterprise, though. That's only one example. This, this council could say, "Well, we want a brand-new $75 million City Hall," or "We want two brand-new high schools." There's all kinds of public projects that would come into play here. So, and to sit here and say, "We can't get this done," I think is irresponsible. If we can't take the time to get this language right and vote on this cycle, we're irresponsible as a council. We're kicking it down the road. That's what we're doing. And the citizens that have taken the brunt of this, right, they're watching this episode here. They're remembering who's voting against and for this, because they were pissed that their taxpayer dollars got spent the way it got spent over the last four to six years. And come hell or high water, that better never happen again. And we're trying to make sure that never happens again. The city's better than that, right? Okay, it's tough. The language ain't perfect, so what? Make it as good as you can and move on, and you can fix it next year. But don't just keep saying, "Well, we don't think it's perfect, so move on." That, that's, that's an excuse, and I don't take that very lightly, because the taxpayers have no voice in this, and they need a voice. And I want to make sure they're hearing this conversation. So the council members that don't want to go forward with this, they don't care about your money going forward. If you care about it, get the language right, let's vote on it next council meeting, and let's move on. It's that important. Don't sit there and laugh, Mr. Farnum. It's that important.
I'll laugh when I want to. It is important, and I agree with you. We need the wording in there.
Well, then let's do it.
Well, you know what? This language doesn't protect against the one thing that we need it to protect against. If, if the debt is paid down, three, four, five geniuses up here could go out and do one of those big projects without a referendum. The wording is terrible.
Then where was your email to say, "I don't like this wording. Let's recommend this, this, and this?" There wasn't a single person. I mean, come on, are we going to act or not?
I spoke directly with the city manager on this over the phone. My concern that I had is that, you know, you say it's irresponsible not to do this. I think it's irresponsible to rush this, because we could very well kneecap ourself into a problem that we don't see.
Yeah, that's a typical.
And, well, it's not typical, that's the correct answer. We need to be very careful with this, because as Mr. Wingard said, it's very hard to undo a charter change. There'd be a big red flag in this case. So I think it's irresponsible to move forward with it without giving it the due diligence that it deserves, because this is a big deal.
Mr. Reed, when's the deadline to have this into the state? November 30. Now, the practical problem we have is advertising at this point, simply because, or, the clerk's shaking her head no.
We've had the public hearing, but because it's an ordinance, you have to have a first reading and a second reading before November 30.
Right.
And if we make significant changes tonight, that would not be our first reading.
So that's, that's the problem at this point. And, look, Mr. Mumpower, I understand your concerns of wanting to get this done, but there's not going to be any debt borrowed between now and this time next year. And, I mean, we just can't do it. We don't have the debt capacity to go out and do anything stupid. We don't have the debt capacity to go out and do anything smart. So, you know, from a legal perspective, I think we need to slow down, take our time, make sure it's right, and make sure that we don't have any unintended consequences. Because at the end of the day, what we don't want to continue to do is go back in front of the General Assembly every single year and make some minor change to a charter, and the charter is more like a constitution, and it should not be changed on a yearly basis just at the whim, because we didn't do something right the first time.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Good.
Has anyone signed up for public comment?
There is not.
In that case, because of the lack of time to discuss this and the need to be responsible and slow this process down, I'm going to make a motion that we postpone this indefinitely until we have time to discuss and consider the ramifications.
All right. We have a motion to postpone indefinitely to give time to discuss.
Indefinitely.
Well, not to a time certain. I mean, that's, I think, what you're saying, not like we're going to come back.
Yeah, without setting, without setting a specific date right now, because I don't know what everybody's schedule is, but to postpone it until we can get together and discuss this in full.
All right.
It appears to me that it's hard for this council to get together and talk. So I'm of the mindset that this topic needs to be on the agenda every time we take our seat until we figure this out.
Why this topic specifically?
Not postpone it indefinitely. This subject matter needs to be talked about every time we sit on this seat till we figure it out.
This one specifically?
This one specifically.
Well, why don't we put on an agenda item, talk about the landfill every time? Or talk about the fall state every time?
That's done deals.
Or talk about potholes every time? There are a lot of issues that we need to address on a regular basis that we don't. And, and I agree with you, we have a hard time talking outside of chambers, I get that, because of different schedules, we have a hard time talking, you know, calling called meetings. But, but, I mean, I don't know that it would be a responsible use of anyone's time to just set an agenda item for this every meeting. You know, if you want to have a called meeting or special meeting, that's one thing. But, I mean, we got plenty of stuff we need to talk about regularly that we don't.
Understand that, but we're not, we're not, we're not getting where we need to be in the timeline in which we need to be there. I made a recommendation that we met in a war room in January, going into a, a budget cycle, and everybody said, "No, that's way too early. We don't need to do that." Now, if you want, if you want to fix the problem, you got to talk about it, and you got to be open.
I agree, and that's why I think we need to have an actual called meeting.
But to table this indefinitely is, is a major mistake. I, I wish you would pull that back and make another recommendation, because indefinitely is not the right terminology to use on this.
Well, I'm not going to pull it back, and I'll tell you why, and I'll ask the clerk Well, I'm not going to pull it back and I'll tell you why, and I'll ask the clerk for clarification. The reason that the motion is made to postpone indefinitely, there are two options when you do this. You can either postpone indefinitely or you can postpone to a date certain. In our case, we have a deadline of November 30th to get this to the General Assembly for it to be considered. Am I correct that there's no way timeline-wise with advertising and all this, for us to get it to the General Assembly by November 30th of this year? Is that correct?
We only have one meeting between now and then.
Right. So, and as the city manager said, there's no way for us to make any stupid decisions between now and this time next year anyway, even if we wanted to. So, I don't know. I mean, we can, we can pull a date out of the air a month from now if you want to have a meeting about this, I guess. But, you know, if you want to do it like that or whatever, but there's no way for us to get it done between now and November 30th anyway. So, I mean, unless you've got a specific date in mind you want me to make the motion for, you know, and what good will it do to talk about it 11 and 1/2 months before we vote on it again?
Well, it does absolutely no good to talk about it 30 days before the deadline. So when's the deadline? When's it going to be brought back up again?
I don't disagree with you that it has done very little good for us to talk about it this close. I don't disagree with you on that at all.
Well, I think we, kind of like we did with funding with the outside agencies, you know, normally these things like this, it's happening right at the deadline. It's hard to have those discussions. I think you're right. It's something that needs to be talked about, maybe at some point, not 30 days before, but, you know, I think the intent of the motion is not indefinite, but when, you know, you either table something to like the next meeting or just to some future time. I think that's more that we'll bring it back up. When that is, I don't, I don't know, but it's definitely something that needs to be talked through. I mean, I think there's some, been a lot of discussion about that. When that will be, I don't know, but we can find a time.
Well, I want to know what the timeline is on indefinitely. What was that timeline?
The council, here's what I'll do. I mean, I've got several important dates coming up over the next week to 10 days that will consume a lot of my time for various matters, really one matter. I will put this on the meeting in December. I don't know the date.
December 8th, the first meeting?
Um...
It's the 8th and the 22nd.
8th and the 22nd. I think a lot depends on whether I can get it on the 8th. Depends on what happens within the next eight to 10 days.
The 22nd?
It may be the 22nd just simply because there's an issue outstanding that I worked long on today that will be going forward again, so...
Can I make one suggestion? If the motion is to postpone it indefinitely, since this would be something, if there's not enough time to make major changes this year and there's clearly no consensus on what all we think the language should be, it would be something we'd be trying to get through by November 30th of next year for the General Assembly if we were bringing this up next year. Is that correct?
That's right.
Could we, if that motion is to do it indefinitely, could we, I mean, at least have some sort of understanding that we would take this up sometime, you know, maybe not December, a whole 11 months before we send it on, but sometime in 2021 between July 1st and the end of October of 2021?
Well, I think one thing that's important for this council to do is to go back and look at every one of our financial policies and familiarize yourself with those policies, I think, is one of the first steps. The second step would be, we need to familiarize ourselves with other cities and what their referendum language is. Ms. Wingard, I agree with you. Most cities have not found themselves in a position like Bristol. But I think it would be wise for me to spend some more time, you know, there's several other cities I need to look at and see exactly what several other cities do as well and let you all review what other cities do. So you can see exactly what other cities do. And look at this all over the course of a period of time. I mean, this is not something we should look at in one or two meetings and come up with an answer. I mean, I think most of the people that are sitting out here are some of the ones who were the most vocal when it came to dumb decisions of the past, but they were sitting here in agreement, understanding they want this done right and that it's important to get it done right the first time and not keep going back to the General Assembly time and time again simply because we want to fix and/or or something of that nature. So my suggestion would be, let me give you an overview at one of the meetings in December, give you all time to review our financial policies, and then we start piecing this together. And once again, council, I've said it a thousand times, communication's key. And unless we communicate, nothing happens. So, and that's, we have to communicate. I mean, I don't know how difficult it is, but evidently it's more difficult than I ever imagined. And, but we've got to communicate the concerns to one another. People do not need to get mad about things. And what I've learned as an attorney, when both sides are irritated about the solution, then you've probably reached the right solution. And there's got to be a give and take. And the process of not being willing to compromise does no one any good and it's a disservice to the taxpayers.
So, to clarify that, then, what you're suggesting is, at a meeting in December, not necessarily the first, but more than likely the second?
Correct.
But maybe the first, depending on...
Depending on how the next 10 days...
And then I just wanted to clarify, you mentioned the policies. Neither you or Ms. Spradler can answer this, that typically it's, I think, at the, by the end of January, the Finance Committee recommends any changes. So the Finance Committee will be reviewing the policies and then anything there before we get into the budget. So that might be a good place, kind of before we get into the budget and then maybe as we go through the budget cycle, pick things back up, as you were saying, sometime closer to this in the July, August, which typically tend to be slower agenda, as far as agenda items, a little slower, allow for more discussion. Does that seem kind of, is that right about the policies?
The financial policies, which is the comprehensive set that does address some debt limits, once again, as Mr. Eads said, it's policy, not a referendum. It's in the policy that that will be presented back toward, back before council by January 31st of each year.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, my question still remains out there. Y'all just have to understand, I'm a simple man with a simple mind and I don't have an attorney's legal degree and I'm not a doctor of any nature. Now, we've got the city manager talking about bringing this back up in the middle to the end of December. We have a motion with the term and words are very important. We have a motion with the term indefinite. I need clarity on...
If my understanding is correct, and correct me if I'm wrong, you'd be giving us an overview of other cities' procedures on referendum and what their language is and what the ramifications would be for us, correct?
What I'm getting ready to do, I'm pulling them up now. All five of you are getting ready to have this. So everybody out there, listen. Every one of you, within the next five minutes, is going to have every financial policy of the city in your email. There's no excuse that no one can take the time to read our financial policies. I'm going to put together a list of the community or localities throughout the state that have referendum language, what that language is. I will submit that to you all so you can review it before that first meeting because it is, it doesn't take me too much time. It'll take me a few hours, but I can put all that together in one document so that everybody can see what other localities do in regards to referendum. Then when we come in at the December 8th or December 22nd meeting, now, whether it's indefinite or not, I'm making a solemn promise here today, unless I die or on a ventilator, you will have this on a December 8th or 22nd agenda item to discuss. You've had the financial policies to review. You will have the referendum language from other localities to review. Hopefully, we can have an intelligent conversation about referendum language at that point.
So, to clarify this, this might speed things up. Would you be willing to amend your motion to say you want to table this item to no later than December 22nd?
Well, Mike, I can if you want me to, but my question would be, so the specific motion that I made is to postpone an ordinance to amend the charter. And we're not voting on December 22nd to amend the charter. We're just discussing it. You know what I'm saying?
So, yeah, no, I think you're right because we wouldn't talk about that particular thing then, but we would. But it is with the understanding we would have this informational meeting and more discussion in December.
Right. And I would be, and I would be completely fine, you know, kind of like the vice mayor said, of actually, you know, working through this and having a real vote on this, you know, sometime closer to the next deadline, you know, in July or in August or something. But, again, I don't know if I want to set, if I'd want to set a deadline, you know, if it were me, I'd set a date this far out because you don't know what could happen between now then. So I think I would want to leave my motion as it is.
That's fine. I understand what you're saying. All right. So we have a motion. We have a second. Did you second them? Do we have a second?
So the motion was to postpone amending the charter.
Yes.
And we're going to have the discussion in December.
Yes.
Second.
Okay. So now we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
So a vote no is trying to rush this through and not protecting the citizens?
Yes.
Well, yeah, a vote, a vote no would be to, how would that be? If you vote yes for this, you're, we're going to talk about this, we're saying you want to talk about, consider this item later and with the provisions that Mr. Eads mentioned about giving additional information along the way.
A yes vote is indefinite not to bring it back up.
Well, no, it's not that it won't...
A no vote is to keep this conversation going.
How, can you interpret?
Nobody has given me a timeline on what indefinite means. Is that a million years, a billion years, a zillion?
It could be.
It could be. Indefinite is a very strong...
The landfill might be full by the time indefinite gets here, Mike. Regardless of what his motion is, I've said, unless I'm dead or on a ventilator, this council is going to have another discussion about this charter language for a referendum December 8th or December 22nd.
I understand that, Mr. Eads, but the motion is made not to bring this up indefinite. So you can have all the discussions you want to about it, but it will never come back up for a charter change. It's indefinite.
No, the motion is to not take up the first reading to a time that's indefinite. So we can reschedule that at any time. And I think the consensus is that that should be closer to actual the reading of the ordinance, which is what we're discussing tonight. That should be closer to the time you would submit it to the General Assembly next fall, not within probably 30 days because we see the issues here. But between now and when this gets taken back up, that we're going to have continued discussion, information that the city manager is going to present so that we can have an ongoing dialogue and time to discuss this and really think about the language and the words that need to be in this. Is that...
That's how I interpret it.
At any time, after we review all this, after we have a discussion, if we come up with language that there's a consensus on, guess what? We can propose an ordinance. You all can vote on this ordinance in February. There's nothing that requires us to hold it off till this time next year. And we'll put that ordinance out there and vote it up or down, send it off to Delegate O'Quinn and Senator Pillion, and they've got it well before November 30th of next year if we can come up, if we put the work in and come to some resolution prior to next November. So there's no, there's nothing that's going to prevent us by this motion from being able to adopt an ordinance requesting a charter change between now and November of next year.
All right. Any more discussion, any questions?
I just think a vote no is just trying to rush it through and not get the wording right.
If everybody's clear and we have no more questions or discussions, clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
No.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Hartley?
Yes.
Move to the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of council?
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
No.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Hartley?
Yes.
All right. Being no further business, stand adjourned.